Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, June 23rd, 2015, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds? Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semus?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Okay, very good. Good afternoon, everybody. Let me, before I kick it over to the manager, let me make a statement here publicly like I did yesterday, and I'll do it again tonight in the council meeting. As you know, the council has been recruiting for a city manager, and we're now preparing for interviews pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711B. During this open session of council, we would like to announce that closed meetings will be held at an undisclosed location within 15 days thereafter for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of Portsmouth's chief administrative office. Okay? Mr. Manager, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Our first item is a report back to you at your request from several weeks ago on activities and events in Portsmouth. The divorce paces of Director of Marketing, Entertainment, and Tourism has a presentation for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Come to give you a quick presentation, a brief presentation relative to Portside and what we've done relative to branding and reestablishment of Portside as a venue here in Portsmouth. Okay. Overall, let's look at the marketing strategy that we started with. In 2014, we began rebranding and capitalizing upon previous brand equity of promoting Portside from using the term "North Landing" to "Portside," and of course, with the holiday insight that includes Portside Park as well. In 2014, overall spend in advertising to promote events and activities at Portside was nearly about $25,000, not to include the inventory and also the added value that we get from use of digital message boards on PCTV, I-264, City Hall Social Services, e-blast, interactive media, website, and social media, and not only that, including collateral materials as well. In October 2014, venue management and entertainment was moved by the previous city manager to department and created the Department of Marketing, Entertainment, and Tourism. 2015, we continue to build Portside brand and with promotion of a variety of festivals, concerts, and events. And even though it's not here on the slide, just wanted to let you know, just so you have an idea, we did some work with Parks and Recreation to figure out what they, what kinds of funds that they used to have in the budget to promote and do these events that they were doing before we got it. We found out that they were spending like, they had in their budget like maybe $197,000. And so, when we took over the department, through the budget process, we requested $200,000. Well, just to let you know, we asked for that, we only got $100,000 of those dollars.
So you got plenty.
Yeah. So what we've been doing here was focusing on quality of events as opposed to quantity of events. And of course, just to give you a general idea, when you look at what it costs to produce an event at Portside, you're spending about maybe $2,500 for a band. That includes sound and lighting, because we don't have sound and lighting there. And the other thing that nobody takes into account when you're promoting, I mean, you're producing these events, is promotion. You know, you can have an event, but if nobody knows it's happening, you would just have an event that nobody attends. So we're spending about maybe $5,000 for some of these events that we're producing, depending upon the band, and it really depends upon the notoriety or the, how much the band plays in the Hampton Roads area. Give you an example, somebody like the original Rondells, they have a great following, they do excellent shows, and they cost a little bit more for those events. So I'm just going to go down the list and give you some updates in terms of some of the things that we're having at Portside.
But it's worth it, though, to be able to bring those larger local acts in that folks want to see, because it brings a good crowd and a mixed crowd. And so how do you gauge that before you go on? How do you gauge which guy really deserves $5,000 instead of $2,500 or $10,000?
Well, actually, we look at what they charge, you know, in the region, and they tell us what their fees are based upon how many events they do in the Hampton Roads area. Basically, different cities pay the brand about the same. They have a going rate for these particular bands, and so, you know, we try to, of course, do some negotiation based upon how many times they're going to play in Portsmouth and what they get, to try to maximize, you know, the benefit of them being here. But for all intents and purposes, they have a set rate in terms of what they charge for some of these events.
So you don't get like a package deal, if you say, over the course of the season, I'm going to give you four opportunities in Portsmouth, then instead of paying a flat rate for one, they know they're going to have four in the books, then they can give you a better price?
Right. And we try, we try to do some of that. For instance, some of the events that happen at Portside, Yemoja Festival, the Seawall Music Festival, we book some of these bands for some of these events, we try to negotiate a better rate, because we tell them, you're going to get more than one event in Portsmouth, don't try to get all the money in one event. So, you're right, we try to do that and focus, again, on the quality of the event and not the quantity of those events.
You know, as far as getting word out for each individual event, I know back in the day, in the 80s, when Portside was thriving, they had them initially every Wednesday. You could set your clock, you didn't need to hear a radio advertisement or a TV advertisement on it. You knew at 5:00, there would be, there would be something going on at Portside, and it was a gathering place.
Right.
And later on, it changed to Thursday, but there again, everybody knew it was thirsty.
Correct.
And that way, it saves on advertising, because people know something's going on down there.
We're trying to get back to that, that's what we're trying to get back to.
Right, and you're exactly right. And here again, and at the end of the presentation, I talked about in your 2013 council meeting, public, I mean, not council meeting, but your retreat, where we talked about reestablishing Portside. Mr. Moody was very instrumental in making, wanting to make sure that we reestablished that as an attraction in Portsmouth. And we, by all means, really and truly want to do that, but here again, as I started out in the beginning, we requested all of those funds through the budget to make sure that we would have the money by which to produce those events, and we only got half of it. So we are trying to figure out, how can we work this thing to focus on quality rather than quantity, unless, you know, there's some other additional fund, funding that's coming our way to help produce some of these events. But we're trying to make sure that when you look over the entire slate of events for the year, not only do you see diversity in terms of the actual events that you have, but you see a wide variety of kinds of events that happen, not only at Portside, but throughout the city as well. And I'll get, you know, I'll get through some of that in the presentation. So some of the upcoming events, of course, we got, you may have seen on the elevator when you came up, we got a lot of events that are happening for Independence Day weekend. I also have some flowers I pass out after this, but July 4th, Dinner of the Movie, this is an event that OTBA is producing. The movie actually happens at Portside Park, and that's why I included it in here. The July 4th, the Stars and Stripes Forever Concert at Portside Park, we did that last year, it was a great event, and we're doing it again. Tide Water Concert Band will be the featured band, they perform from 8:00 to 9:30, and the Billy Joel Trio is going to be the group that opens the concert. And then, of course, we are working with the City of Norfolk in our partnership with the fireworks sponsorship, so fireworks will come up at 9:30 at that particular time after that. Another event is the July 4th, the Rooftop, the National Prayer Initiative, which will happen at Portside the same day from noon to 1:30. One of the events that we were trying to do, if you remember, for several years, we worked with Alvin Keels, who produced his jazz event at the Renaissance Hotel. We were hoping that that was going to end up being Portsmouth Jazz Festival, if you will, and some things happened whereby that event is no longer in Portsmouth. Hampton got it because of some situations that were beyond our control. But, so what we're trying to do with some events at Portside is create some things that we can build upon. This year, we wanted to do a July jazz event. Of course, most of you know Karen Briggs, who's a native of Portsmouth, she's a national artist, and she's a violinist. Raw Jazz is one of the area's premier bands, who will open that concert from 6:30 to 8:30. And then on that Saturday, Brian Simpson, who used to be a, he has a new CD out called Out of a Dream, but he was also a former musical director for Janet Jackson, and so he has a great jazz following and is a national artist. We're getting a lot of buzz about this concert, and we met with IMG today, Ken came over, and we're talking about possibly looking at this as a community day and maybe moving it to Intellus Pavilion, because right now, it's getting a lot of buzz in terms of who's going to be there, and I don't want us to not be able to accommodate the people, plus, I don't want rain to compromise the quality of the event that we have. And so if it goes to a bigger venue, then it becomes a free community day, and it's a free concert that everybody can come to, and we have a lot more space available to The 29th Annual Unity Celebration Gospel Rama happens April 1st and 2nd. They have over about 20 gospel acts on the Portside stage, and of course, a lot of these, you see I use the tag "free music, free all the time." All of the events that we produce at Portside have been free events, because, one, there's no way to rip it off to figure out how you charge for these events, and that's going back to what we talked about before in your council retreat, it became a gathering place. And the reason why it was effective at that is because a lot of those things were free at that particular venue. Okay. Another event that we want to have, August 14th, Bringing Back Shagging at Portside, using the original Rondells from 6:30 to 9:30 PM. Here's some other upcoming events, and I won't read through the entire listing, but some of the big things in this listing, the Coast Guard Eagle will be here, August 19th through 21st, and we're working right now with them to figure out where we're going to put it based upon the issues that we have with the Seawall, but we want to try to figure if we can get it at the Portside Marina. I don't want to say North Landing, because we're trying to get away from that, but that would be an area that we're looking at to see if we can put it there and create the synergy again down at Portside. These are some of the events that people have called us about and have booked these events, and gone through Renee Spratley, who handles events for our department in terms of using that facility. In October, of course, the Great Chesapeake Bay Schooner Race is another big event that happens down at the inlet, I mean, at the Portside. Here are some other downtown events that will be happening, of course, August 22nd, 23rd, Seawall Arts Show, which is produced by the Portsmouth Museums Foundation. I won't read the entire list, but I go through some of the other things. Every year, OTBA produces the Old Town Safe Trick or Treat, which happens in Old Town. Again, November 21st is the annual Grand Illumination Parade, of course, when you, we went through our budget, you put that money back in the budget to do the sponsorship, and we will collaborate with them again. And this event, this particular listing goes through the end of the year. Okay? And I do have a bit of good news to share with you, ending my presentation. We have won a national award, the 35th Annual Telly Awards. If you remember the Right Side of the River campaign that we did, we won a bronze award in that competition. Now granted, that's a great thing for us, because we don't have the budgets that some of those other cities have. I mean, they have sometimes triple amount of money that we have, and we were able to submit that campaign that we ran and got a telly award. And so it was founded in 1979, and it's a premier award honoring outstanding local, regional, and cable TV commercials and programs. So we're happy about that, we should get our copy of the award, and once we do that, we'll share that with you, so you can see it as well. And I have a few things to pass around just so you can have, to remind you of some of the events that we have coming up.
Now, from a marketing standpoint, how far are we from getting back to where we were if we continue? I know the money's an issue, and we probably need, if you've got something that case by case, if we need to tweak the budget, we probably ought to consider that, but how far are we from getting back to that? Because Bill's right, until you get to a point where people know they can come downtown on Wednesday or Thursday, or sometime, to be able to enjoy themselves, get a hot dog and all of that, you're not going to get that, that whole sense of place that you're actually looking for. And again, that helps our downtown vendors and all of those types of things, but just from a marketing perspective.
Well, we're happy about trying to reestablish that, because again, here, the reason, one of the reasons why John put the department together as it was, was to increase feet on the street and heads in beds. And it helps with our overall tourism efforts, if we can get people to come downtown and come down on a regular basis. Doing those events and concerts on a Friday with regularity is great for us. We would love to be able to produce these and get people accustomed to going to Portside as our downtown venue. That's what you said you wanted in your council retreat, and that's what we've been trying to do, and we've been building upon that brand equity in terms of that name. Portside name never went away, so we stopped using North Side Landing and started focusing on Portside, because everybody knew Portside and they knew where it was. And so, having had two years of using advertising dollars to promote Portside, and now trying to create a new identity to get people to go there, we're in the same throes of doing what we did when Portside was created some time ago. Norfolk is getting ready through the Cordish Group, ready to launch Waterside Live. What's going to be our complement on the side of the water? The good thing for them, though, is that in downtown Norfolk, they looked at Town Point Park, and they said, we don't care whether that's lucrative property or not, we're going to designate this area as a people's property. And so therefore, whatever they created is permanent. It doesn't have to go away, they don't have to worry about the disconnect of creating something that's, that's not going to be there for a while. Unfortunately for us, whatever we create at Portside is not permanent, because of the fact that the property is still going to be there. James might be able to talk to you more about what we've done relative to establishing an infrastructure and a building there to get us back to where we need to be, where you actually now have a destination as opposed to just an attraction. But I can tell you, this is something that we really would love to be able to do, because of course, we've got all the things that happen there, but Portside used to be kind of sort of a home in downtown Portsmouth, and we really want to rebuild that and capitalize on that particular place. But the only way that we can do that is that we've got to have some funding to be able to do that.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dana. If we were, if we said to you tonight, we want to have a weekly, a weekly event, it doesn't have to be Bill, Deal, and the Rondells. It can be, you know, Susie and Mary playing the guitar. It's clear that the type of entertainment truly doesn't matter. It's all about a place to go.
Right.
And the baby carriages, and buy a hot dog, buy a Coke, buy a beer, whatever.
Bring the dog.
Yeah, bring your dogs, whatever. If we said, we want, we want a weekly event from Memorial Day to Labor Day, or till October even, because the weather's usually nicer then, could you come back sometime and say, okay, you all asked me what it costs to do a weekly event that's not the $5,000, the $1,000 entertainment?
Right.
Or even less? Could you come back and say, okay, so if we do that, this is how much money I need to do that, to pull off the production of the event and send out a few more emails and hire some food trucks, or whatever it is you do, so that we could say, okay, you know?
It's worth the investment.
This is what we want to do. Or, okay, we can do it this year, but we really want to put it into next year's budget, so we know come Memorial Day, boom, it happens.
I'd like to see that. And I'd like to see the numbers. Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, I agree with that 100%, but I think that cost, in the past, Portside didn't have a band every Wednesday or every Thursday. Sometimes it was a remote from one of the popular radio stations around, but I think we could offset some of that cost by vendors, you know, charging them a fee to be there, because that's where people are. So I think, well, the Memorial Day, Saturday evening, the place was packed, and probably could have used more vendors. I thought it was a little slack on vendors, actually.
You mean Seawall Festival Night?
Yeah, Seawall Festival Night.
Oh yeah, that could have been 10 times as much food there.
Yeah, exactly. So I think some of that cost can be offset, but I agree that until we get something regular going, then the crowd will come. It doesn't have to be the Rondells every night, or a band that we pay big bucks for.
Yeah, guys that play the guitar, yeah.
It's a fellowship thing. Yeah, exactly.
Why don't we let that be our goal, to see what we can accomplish through the rest of the summer with a weekly activity, and to try to do it to the greatest extent as possible within existing resources? Because if we come back to you, this is a recurring cost, or it's not a one-time cost, and so I wouldn't recommend that you amend the budget with surplus to do this kind of thing, and I don't know where else we're going to find it, considering how constrained this FY16 budget is, but let us work on a plan to do what we can with existing resources, and if there is an additional appropriation amount, you know, we'll bring that back to you.
All right, very good. Thank you, Labor. Oh, yes, ma'am?
Just one more thing. In deference to the people who live nearby, many of them have said to us over the year, music on the Portside stage does not travel into Old Town. Music on a stage that's up on the grass does.
Okay.
And back in the day, we always had music, that's what the Portside stage was for.
Okay.
But it was less obtrusive to the residents.
Okay.
And also, it's easier to talk, frankly, for those people that are there to talk.
So more frequent use of the Portside stage as opposed to showable that's on the grounds there?
Yeah, and I think that probably cost less.
Right.
Well, good job, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Your next item is an update on the Seawall, and we're going to talk a little bit about the timeline, and you've evaluated the condition rating of the sections and the preliminary cost, and as James comes up to do that briefing, I want to let you know that we have already been working with our financial advisor. Last week, Judy Duffy and Nita and myself met with them to talk about developing some new capital funding scenarios that will allow us to advance this project, because as you know, we have it in the CIP, but it's spread out over future fiscal years, and I don't think any of us, or you all have said, and I agree, that we don't, we don't need to leave this Seawall inaccessible for three years. So we're working to try to develop several options for funding to move it up. It's still early to predict how much fiscal year-end funds will be available that we could apply to that, that funding scenario, but we're thinking we'll have that and a list of funding scenarios to bring back to you in August or September of the latest, so that we can begin planning in earnest, getting these Seawall sections repaired as quickly as possible. So having queued it up with that, let me ask James if you would kind of go through the engineering details.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I'm going to refer you to the slide that I handed out as a reference that shows the section of the Seawall. So it shows the City Hall section, the Admiral's Landing section, the High Street Landing section, the Renaissance, Admiral's Landing section, the North Inlet, the Holiday Inn section. The only section that you don't see in there that's referenced is called the Ocean Ring section, and that is that section that turns right around a corner, and it's a section right adjacent here to City Hall. There's been a lot of work over the past two months, once we got the results, that initial finding from the underwater inspection. The reason why we went about doing that underwater inspection, two years ago when we did the inspection, there were some issues that came up in the Seawall. And so, from that inspection, it said you need to inspect the Seawall more frequently than you have in the past. And plus, seeing as how we're already planning to replace the Seawall, and we're already working on plans, we're at right around the 50% design stage, and it was a good idea to go and take another look at the Seawall, just to see if there's any change conditions, so we can make those modifications to the plans we're working on. When we got those results in, what we saw is the conditions have changed. Before, it was the Holiday Inn section, that was the critical section that we were looking at. These inspection results sure start to show that you had issues with the Admiral's Landing section, that Renaissance section, and City Hall section. So when we got that first report, the first thing we did was meet together the team and make some decisions about, okay, just in the interest of public safety, until we get some more information back, we'll go ahead and close off that section, the Admiral's Landing Renaissance section. Then as we continued to get more and more information in, we decided to go ahead and close the City Hall section down. As this data's coming in, the team's meeting weekly, physically weekly, we're having phone conversations back and forth, and so we changed how we're going to go about the design, and said, okay, that design from that failure back in 2009, this is what we're going to have to go with, because we can incorporate that design into the final design. So anything we have to do on a temporary basis, those, those measures we put in place are going to be there and be incorporated into the final design. So the first part of this month, we received bids to take off the promenade, the walking surface right there, between the two inlets, so it's the Renaissance Admiral's Landing section. This week, we'll be working to put out a bid package to do the emergency bracing plan for that same section, and we hope to open those bids in the middle of, middle of this month coming up. We hope to be complete with the overall plan for replacing the Seawall sometime in August, and so that lines us up with CIP funding, with our original plan as far as replacement. The only thing that changes is now, we won't be working on the Holiday Inn section first, we'll be working on this Admiral Landing Renaissance section. That sort of walks us through the timeline as to where we are right now. If we do, and we look at the condition assessment, basically, the Seawall's at the end of its service life, you get about 50 years, and we're right in that ballpark. The majority of damage to Seawall is underneath, right at the waters level of the tide level, it goes up and down a little bit, and just a little bit below. And what you find is you have section loss in both the steel sheet piles and both the H, the batter piles, the H piles. And what it means by section loss is that metal deteriorates to the point where it's disappearing. So if you can imagine a piece of cheese, just for reference, imagine a piece of cheese, and it's solid. So when I say there's section loss, imagine a piece switches. So now, that gives you a general idea of what you're seeing when I say section loss, though. Sections of metal are missing, and so that's what I mean when I say section loss. And how you rate this structure when you do the analysis and you do the inspection, you rate it similar to a bridge. It's exposed to the same types of elements and conditions, you have a section underwater, you have a section above water, and so it's rated similarly to a bridge. And so you use the National Bridge Index, and that scales from 0 to 9, 0 being the worst, 9 being the best. And if you see in this table here, you can see where it rated out in 2013, and then where it rated out in 2015. As you can see, the conditions for Area 3, which is the Renaissance Hotel, the Admiral's Landing section, those conditions have changed from a 1, from a 2 to a 1. The Holiday Inn section and the City Hall section are still 2s, but they're, they're 2s such that you really need to take a look at those to determine what are those next measures that you need to take. And the general description of Condition 1 is basically, you need to go ahead and close that section, which is what we did to that Admiral's Landing Renaissance section. As you can see, the overall condition has dropped from a 2 to a 3, which means when we get the final report in, as we've gotten it in in sections and going through and has the team to analyze, when we get that final report in, we need to really, really look at that report to make a determination of what do we do with the City Hall section that we have closed down? Do we leave it closed? Is there anything that we can do to open it back up? Those questions are still up in the air right now, and what do we do right now with the Holiday Inn section? Okay, on the last page, you see the cost for some of these items that I've just discussed. The current contract for removal of the promenade, $200,000. The emergency bracing is estimated to cost a million. The complete replacement of that Admiral's Landing section, $4.5 million. That all falls in line with the, with the available funding in the CIP and the CIP request, so that funding's, those items are covered in planned budget. What you don't have in the planned budget is the City Hall and now the Holiday Inn section, which has sort of shifted out because of the condition of the Admiral's Landing Renaissance section. So the cost for those two sections together is just under $12 million, and the cost replaced the North Inlet is just under $3 million.
Okay, Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. James, on the dredging of the river, knowing that river is very narrow, does that have any impact on the deterioration, or the, I guess, the slippage of the bracing?
No, sir, not from the results that, what we found and then in talking to the divers, it's too far out in the channel, and what we're experiencing is not an erosion issue, it's a deterioration issue.
So no erosion due to that at all?
No, sir.
Knowing that the plans are to make it even deeper?
Not at this point. There's, what we found in the last two inspections, there's been no instances of any work in the channel impacting the Seawall.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. James, I see you got FY16 completion of the Admiral Landing section, which is, which is, there you go, I guess, and the plan's completed in the August of this year. How long is the Seawall going to be closed? How long, how long can we expect us not to be able to walk from, from, from the end of the Seawall?
Well, the Admiral's Landing section, the Renaissance section, will be closed until we can do those repairs. The City Hall section, we'll know sometime in July, once we get a chance to go through the report, and sit down and figure out, okay, is it, can we open it up? Is there anything we need to do before we open it up? So we have to go through that process and ask all these questions as we go through the report, so sometime- So sometime in July, we'll have an answer for that City Hall piece.
When would all, when do we expect to have it completed?
The entire Seawall?
Yeah.
It's, it's too early to answer that question.
It depends on how we're able to restructure the funding, because right now, it's structured over three future fiscal years.
Because all this says, even for Admiral's Landing section, just says FY16, that's a 12-month, I mean, they ought to have some targets, you know, so people can know. Can you follow?
I agree, and as soon as we can, we will, but it's, right now, it's a safety issue, and it's also, we're trying to figure out how to restructure the funding so that we can advance it and get it all done as quick as possible.
So based on the funding you got right now, how long, how long are you thinking? If, if nothing changes?
We didn't do anything with the budget, all we can do is, is repair the, the Admiral's Landing Renaissance section. So construction period would take how long?
90, 120 days.
You have money phased in for future years, right?
Yes.
Okay, if you, if you follow that schedule, how long would it take?
Three fiscal years, FY18.
So FY18, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, James. Again, how old is that Seawall? We're right at the 50-year life, or?
Early 40, it's like 43, 44, something like that. We're, we're getting there.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Man?
That's it for me, sir.
That's it for you. I think we've got a motion to go into closed. I'm not going to take those in.
May I have a closed meeting, sent to Virginia Code, Section 232, 3711. The consultation with legal counsel, briefings by staff members of consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation. For such consultational briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. In consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring division of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Dr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks is absent. Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Semus?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are enclosed, thank you.